A couple of things here up front. I do have a proclamation I'd like to read. Whereas the city of Winona and the state of Minnesota has a significant interest in the continued vitality of general aviation, aircraft manufacturing, aviation, educational institutions, aviation organizations, the community airports, whereas general aviation and the Winona Municipal Airport has an immense economic impact on the city of Winona, and whereas Minnesota is home to 153 public use airports which serve 12,478 pilots and 4,365 active general aviation aircraft, and whereas Minnesota is home to 109 fixed-based operators, 51 repair stations, 522 heliports, 11 FAA-approved pilot schools, 1,933 flight students and 2,500 flight instructors, and whereas general aviation in Minnesota contributes over $5.3 billion to the state's economy annually, and whereas general aviation not only supports Minnesota's economy, it improves overall quality of life by supporting emergency medical and healthcare services, law enforcement, firefighting, disaster relief, and by transporting business travelers to their destinations quickly and safely, and whereas the nation's aviation infrastructure represents an important public benefit and congressional oversight should be in place to ensure stable funding of this system. Therefore, I mark Peterson, Mayor of Winona, Minnesota, to hereby proclaim general aviation a vital strategic resource to the city of Winona and declare October 2015 to be general aviation appreciation month. Also, just a quick update on the city manager's search. Since our city manager submitted resignation two weeks ago, we have contacted two search firms, and both of those search firms are submitting proposals this week. We had hoped to have a pre-council discussion with those search firms at our next meeting on the 19th, but that day and time does not work for one of those search firms, so we're going to have a subcommittee of myself, Jerry Craig, and Councilman Thurly, and we will meet with those firms and then come back on the 19th, hopefully with a recommendation to the council to move the process forward. It's very timely to keep this going and making sure that we've got the professional services that we want to do a good job. So that's the update on that. And Deb Ward is here. She's going to present several awards tonight on behalf of the Fine Arts Commission. Deb?
Thank you. Thank you for having us here, and I'm thrilled to see all the people here. I'm not so sure they're all here for the Fine Arts Commission awards, but I think they are. First of all, before I get started, I do want to just take a moment to recognize the individuals who are on the Fine Arts Commission and to say a huge thank you to them for coming to our monthly meetings and all the time and all the work that they put into being Fine Arts Commission members. And I know some of them are here, so when I say your name, if you just want to give a little wave, that would be great. I want to recognize Ann Plummer, Jim Trauton, Crystal Hagie, Marcia Radcliffe, Sam Brown, Noah Short, Mary Farrell, and we have a new member who hopefully will be appointed to the commission in a few minutes later on in the agenda, so that person shall remain anonymous until the appointment's made.
Big secret.
It's a big secret. So the first award that I'm here to give tonight is to Sherri Harkenreider. Sherri Harkenreider's skills in marketing and business relations have created the backbone for large and small organizations to flourish, making Winona a true arts destination. She has dedicated herself to supporting and promoting a variety of organizations since 2006, including the Women's Arts Class, Great River Shakespeare Festival, Midwest Music Fest, Frozen River, River Arts Alliance, Live at the Levy, and many more. The Fine Arts Commission is honored to acknowledge an individual whose enthusiasm and devotion to the arts is truly a force of nature. Thank you, Sherri Harkenreider. First of all, I'm a little stunned. Ms. Crystal will tell you when she called. This was not on my radar at all, but it's really, I'm accepting this and thanking the Fine Arts Commission for all the people that collaborate, network, coordinate, and make all the support possible, because without all of them, none of this awesome arts and culture would happen. So, thank you for me, but thank you also for all of them. Thanks. Our next award this year goes to Nancy Edstrom-Bachler. Nancy Edstrom-Bachler has generously contributed her gifts as a highly skilled, talented, and enthusiastic musician to the Winona community for nearly 40 years, but she only started when she was two. As a composer, Nancy is currently collaborating on a musical, Francis and Claire. She has written the music for a Christmas pageant that is produced always for charity and for two hospice fundraising reviews. As a teacher, Nancy gives private piano and organ lessons and has taught French and art score at St. Mary's University, Winona State University, and the former College of St. Teresa for over 30 years. She has performed piano concerts at WSU, CST, and the Winona History Center, Bach concerts at Central Lutheran, liturgies at SMU and CST as a quote "lounge" unquote pianist at Winona Health and for the Great River Shakespeare Festival. She regularly plays piano and organ at First Congregational and Cathedral of the Sacred Heart for church services, retreats, weddings, and funerals. She has directed the children's choir at First Congregational for 38 years and has played the Calliope for the city of Winona. Proceeds from her three CDs have gone to charity. Nancy is also a ubiquitous accompanist, including Theater to Mississippi shows, hospital follies fundraisers, student recitals at WSU, SMU, and CST, and Cotter and Winona Senior High Band concerts. Nancy's additional specialties include sight-reading on the fly, transcribing recorded music, and writing arrangements for popular hymns. And I believe Nick is here tonight. Can you see this? Unfortunately, Nancy is in France tonight, so she couldn't be with us.
And she was told, I was told I did not have to give a speech, but I will let you know since age was brought up that she is 10 minutes older than I. But, that happened way back a long time ago. So very much, we appreciate this. Thank you from Nancy, and she'll thank you all when she gets back from Europe, or when they get back from Europe.
Thank you. And our last award this evening goes to the Winona Municipal Band. The Winona Municipal Band celebrated its 100th anniversary in 2015, and the Fine Arts Commission recognizes this milestone in connection with the band's contribution to the arts in Winona. The band has regularly entertained the Winona community with concerts in the park, and by doing so, has enriched the arts in Winona with their commitment to performing band music that reflects a repertoire of composers ranging from John Philip Sousa to Hoagy Carmichael. For their centennial season celebrations, the band partnered with other arts organizations that organized special pre-concert activities highlighting the arts. We congratulate the band for their 100 years of providing music that has strengthened Winona's commitment to the arts.
Thank you. I hope you came to some of our concerts and enjoyed some of the history and some of the music. I would like to have the people that served on the committee that are here tonight and helped us organize this whole thing, stand up, please. Our wonderful new director, Levi. And also thank the city for the continued help that we get to exist and the audience that keeps coming, and all of the people that play. We really had a wonderful time and fun looking into the history of it all and fun playing the music, so thank you very much.
I have to put my two cents worth in. The one thing that was appreciated more than anything by the band was our really wonderful new director, Levi Lindak, who is here tonight. He's been in the band a long time. He's a Winona fellow, and he made this year very special. And we also need to thank the many, many sponsors for each concert and the people who gave gift certificates and the special people who made special nights, like Lakeview Drive-In for our candy, Play-Doh's Donuts. I mean, we had a year like you ain't gonna see again. I hope you had some of it, but it was amazing. It showed the belief that people of this community have in the Winona Municipal Band, and it's going to keep on going. Thank you.
No reports.
Okay, roll call.
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurly.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander, here.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Double.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, the first item, item 2.1, is to levy assessments for the 2015 sidewalk replacement project.
Declare the public hearing open. And ask if there's anybody here wishing to speak, to step forward to the podium, state your name and address. Is anybody here tonight to speak to this? One more chance. Anybody here to speak to this? I guess not. Close the public hearing. And ask if there's a motion.
I'd move to adopt the attached resolution.
Second. Seconded by Michelle. Seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Passes.
Item 2.2 is to levy assessments for the 2015 Franklin Street Reconstruction Project.
Another public hearing. Declare the public hearing open. Ask if anybody's here to speak to this. Anybody here to speak to the Franklin Street Reconstruction Project? Levy assessments. One final chance. Anybody here? Hearing none. Declare the public hearing closed and ask if there's a motion.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle. Seconded by Paul. Again, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carries.
Under the petition's request and communications, item 3.1 is the appointment to the Fine Arts Commission of Teresa Remick. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle. Seconded by George. Is Teresa here still? Okay. Put a face to a name. Thanks for volunteering. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Congratulations.
Item 3.2 is the street renaming request by Miller Scrap to rename Tremolo Drive to Recycling Lane.
I would move to approve the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by George. Seconded by Paul. Any discussion on this? Pam?
I just have a question. It wasn't clear. I was going to drive out there today, but I didn't get to it. Is this, is Miller recycling the only business on that road?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carries.
Item 3.3 is a request for utility fee reduction for 181 North Baker, and Mr. Merkowitz is here, if you have questions.
Mr. Merkowitz, would you like to state your name and address and state your case?
My name's Leonard Michael Merkowitz, 181 North Baker Street, Winona, Minnesota. I have a problem. I had people from the water department come up to my house beginning of September, just before my birthday, to let me know that I had gone through, there were 5,000 gallons of water through my line. They asked me if I was aware of a problem. I thought that I had a problem, and I was in the process of fixing it. I thought the problem was my toilet, the plunging department, or the float. So I emptied the container, cleaned off the thing, and reset it back up. A couple days later, I come to find out that it didn't stop the problem. I had replaced the flapper. That didn't stop the problem. I shut the water tank off and found out that I had gone through, when the guys come up to my house to inform me, they told me that I had gone over 5,000 gallons of water. This is a problem that because of my disabilities, I wasn't able to hear it and I couldn't see because it was the bottom part that the flapper goes down to. I replaced the toilet. In the process, my kitchen sink started leaking. I ended up replacing the kitchen sink, threw my back out, took my girl to the doctor's office on the 20th. She went into the hospital on the 22nd, and I got her out on the 26th. Now, I've got three grandchildren that had birthdays in October and November. I just got a notice from the bank that on my checking account, I have a $300 or $1,000 extension. They sent me a notice that on September 29th, I had gone into the $300. I had $240 some dollars left on that. I received the bill from the water department that says my bill is $280 some dollars. I didn't use the water. The water went through my line. I didn't have a way to detect it because of my disabilities. I needed to know if there's anything that you can help me with. I asked the water department to defer my bill until I could get to the meeting. When I stopped up to put the name, my name on the agenda for the meeting for the 21st, they told me that I had gotten there in the afternoon, that the agenda was already set up, that the earliest I get it was October 5th, or for the meeting, October 5th. On my way home, the fuel pump went out of my vehicle. That cost me about $365. Right on the verge of stepping over the edge. I don't know if there's anything that you can do or that you will do, but I'd appreciate anything that you do. I have to pay the bill in two days. I don't know yet, because nobody informs me if I'm using up more water than my normal 1,000 gallons in the three-month time period, because there was no notification. I know it's my responsibility to check my water lines, but there was no indication for me to tell. It isn't like I had puddles of water. I just, it was going through my line. I didn't use the water, but it went through my line. If there's anything that you can help me with, I'd appreciate it. I have to pay the bill in two days. My normal bill is somewhere around $86. The bill I got in my pocket is for $280 some dollars. I'd just like to know if there's something or anything that you can do for me.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Michelle, you have a question?
No, I didn't have a question. I was just saying I'd make a motion to defer the payment, allow him to set up a payment plan with the water department with no late fees, is the motion I would make, so that he can get it paid in a time that works with what's going on in his life right now.
Well, I'm on a fixed income, so no matter what you do to me, this is going to help. If I have to pay the $285, my girl gets social security. She had gotten taken off in 1998, so had been living on my disability checks. I became just totally disabled in 2004. My workman's comp hasn't been settled. It's been over 10 years. So, no matter what you do, it's not going to help me.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second to that motion? Okay. Any other motions?
I would, I would move to forgive the sanitary sewer fee, the sanitary sewer bill of $103.35.
I'll second that.
Motion by Pam and seconded by George to remove the sanitary sewer fee.
The sanitary sewer, yes. There's a sewer availability fee, and then there's a sanitary sewer. Remove the $103.35.
Jerry?
First of, Mr. Merkowitz, in the past, we rarely do this, and when we do do it, the most we've ever done is to reduce the sanitary portion. The water was used, but it was clean water, therefore, it didn't go, you know, it was easier to pass through the sanitary portion. But usually when we do that, we forgive the additional amount over the previous bills. So if normally, it would have been, say, $20 or $30 for sanitary, so since it's, that's not what we've normally done, so actually, this one would be slightly more than what we have done in the past.
See, I got the bill here. I don't know if it'll help these guys.
Yeah, we've got it as well. I'm just pointing out for yourself and for others here that if we go along with this one, it's not only, it's more than we normally do for people, the other people in the past. That's, as long as you know that.
Okay.
Normally, don't staff work with the property owner and try to take that fee out before it comes to council? Hasn't that been done before?
Staff only does it if the water did not go into the sewer system. Then we'll do exactly what Mr. Craig is saying, is we will take out, make the sewer a normal, normal sewer charge, but when it's all gone into the sewer system and all the water's been used, then it has to come to the council. I don't have to go change that fee.
Okay, thank you. George?
Keith, but this water did go through the meter.
It went through the meter and into the sewer.
My position in the past has always been that, you know, you've used the water, and, you know, I think that you owe the bill for it, and I'm very happy to try to work with the property owner to try to spread those payments out with no additional interest to help you pay it, but I'm really...
Well, I'm already getting that part taken care of because they extended it. They told me that they don't put late fees on until the 7th.
Right, but I'd be willing to spread that out 12 months if that helps you, but...
Well, I'll pay the bill up. If you're going to reduce it, $103, that'll help tremendously because I'll be able to fit that in. I still got $224 extension on the bank credit, so...
Well, that hasn't been decided yet.
I said if.
Right, okay. Other discussion? Okay. We'll vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
So that means it's $103.35 that I can take off of the bill?
Right.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Next, item number 3.4. It's a request for modifying the MSAS route for Gilmore Avenue. I'd move to approve the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by Michelle. Seconded by Al. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign. Carries.
Item 3.5 is a presentation on the Creative Minnesota Report, and MCA staff, Minnesota Citizens for the Arts staff is here to make that presentation.
Start with Chad.
Mayor and council, the city of Winona agreed to participate in the Minnesota Citizens for the Arts Creative Minnesota Project and in the Americans for the Arts Economic Impact Study. This is a reliable and affordable way to assess the economic impact of the city's nonprofit arts and culture industry. Sheila Smith, the Executive Director of the Minnesota Citizens for the Arts, is here tonight to present and take questions from council. Following the questions from council, we've reserved a room across the halls. We'll move across to the halls. You can continue with your regular council meeting, and that way, if the public wishes to continue the discussion or asks questions of Sheila, we'll do that across the hall. So with that, Sheila, round up.
Good evening. Thank you so much for participating in the Creative Minnesota Project. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. I'm a frequent visitor to Winona because of your extraordinary arts community, whether it's seeing a play with the Shakespeare Festival, or an event at St. Mary's, or the Frozen River Film Festival, or all of the many other offerings that your nonprofit arts and culture organizations provide. In fact, I was here just a month or so ago for the board meeting of the Minnesota Council of Nonprofits at which the mayor came to visit, and I love being here, so thank you for participating. So the Creative Minnesota Project is a collaborative effort of the Minnesota's statewide arts-supporting foundations and organizations such as the McKnight Foundation, the Bush Foundation, Jerome Foundation, Minnesota Citizens for the Arts, the organization that I work for, the Minnesota Historical Society, the Regional Arts Councils, and the Minnesota State Arts Board. It's an effort to set a baseline of data about the nonprofit arts and culture in Minnesota because all of these arts policymakers found that there wasn't sufficient good baseline data about the nonprofit arts in Minnesota, and that it was our responsibility to start an effort to create that information. I'm going to go quickly through a couple of the high points of the statewide study so that you have context for your local information. Oh, there you go. So that's a list of the sponsoring partners. This is the first year of a multi-year project. This first year, we're looking at primarily nonprofit arts and culture organizations and the spending and economic impact of their audiences. The next round, we will be looking at the economic lives of individual artists in the state and then moving on to other subjects about the state's arts community. I guess we're going to have to use your manual method. Okay. So on a statewide basis, 1,269 nonprofit arts and culture organizations participated. You can see that primarily, they are performing arts organizations. Secondly, arts organizations of many kinds between visual arts, multipurpose, literary arts, et cetera, and then a healthy contingent of history and historical preservation organizations, primarily the county historical societies and others. Go. So here's the big marquee number for a statewide economic impact, $1.2 billion in economic impact from the nonprofit arts and culture on a statewide basis. This includes both nearly $700 million in the direct expenditures of the organizations themselves, that's without any multipliers, and then the direct expenditures of their audiences traveling to and from the arts events. What's interesting about this number is that, next slide, please. Minnesota's nonprofit arts and culture sector is double that of Wisconsin, even though Wisconsin and Minnesota have nearly the same number of residents. We have 10 and a half times the arts economy of Kansas and 12 and a half times the arts economy of South Dakota. So if you're a creative person in the Midwest, you are probably looking to Minnesota and packing up your car and coming here because this is where the jobs are going to be, because we have such a robust nonprofit arts and culture economy. Move forward. This $1.2 billion represents an increase of 43% since we last studied the economic impact of the arts in Minnesota in 2006. You may recall that the legacy amendment passed in 2008. There is a slight difference in methodology between the two studies, which meant that we were better able to include the very small organizations in this new study, so some of this increase is due to the change in methodology. But if you talk to any of the regional arts council directors who are directly responsible for supporting arts organizations in Minnesota, they will say there was an actual increase in the number of organizations also as the legacy dollars were implemented. Move forward. So this $1.2 billion on a statewide basis supports over 33,000 full-time jobs. These jobs are both folks that work for a nonprofit arts and culture organization and people who are working directly for organizations supported by the spending of the organizations and their audiences, such as, for example, printers who are printing the programs and other materials for a theater, or a caterer who is catering events at a local arts center. And so just as an aside, if there's anybody here employed by a nonprofit arts and culture organization, would you raise your hand? Hey, there's some jobs right there?
Yeah.
Okay, and that represents an increase of 11,000 FTEs since 2006. So the legacy amendment, we believe, has also had a direct impact in employment in Minnesota in the nonprofit arts. Next. These 1,269 organizations have served 19 million attendees on an annual basis. This is also a big jump from 2006 of about 4.5 million attendees, which reflects the very tight focus of the regional arts councils and the state arts board on focusing legacy dollars on access. Forward. 2.6 million K-12 students are served annually by these nonprofit arts organizations, and one of the reasons I love this number is there's only 800 to 900 K-12 students in the state. So that means every kid in Minnesota has gotten around three experiences in the nonprofit arts from these nonprofit organizations. Forward. We found from the US Census that there's over 42,000 artists live in Minnesota, which is really a huge number. Forward. And also that the Minnesota level of employment of artists in the workforce... of employment of artists in the workforce is higher than the national average. And not going through all the detail, the one place that we greatly exceed the national average, five times the employment in the publishing industry in Minnesota, which reflects our large number of nonprofit presses, Gray Wolf Press, Coffee House Press, Dragonfly Press, et cetera. If you just Google Minnesota publishers, you will find pages and pages and pages. Move forward. So Minnesota is divided up into eleven arts regions, and here in Winona, we are part of the Southeast Minnesota Regional Arts Council area. We did a separate study of each of the eleven regions, and we found a robust arts economy in every single one of the regions. But as you can see down here in this corner of the state, you have a bit more, a larger number of nonprofit arts and culture organizations than almost anywhere else in the state, except for the metro area. So that's good to see. Forward. So now we're under the Winona highlights. This is a picture from the Shakespeare Festival. I recognize Henry the Fifth. Go ahead. So in Winona, we had sixteen participating organizations. Organizations participated in the study by being one of several data collection methods. One is that they're a part of the Cultural Data Project, which is an online data, financial data information system that's set up by the foundations to simplify grant making. Secondly, they could have been a grantee of the State Arts Board or Regional Arts Council, in which case we could collect financial data from those grantmakers. And third, there was an online form through which the organizations could participate. Next slide. You can see that your profile of the different kinds of organizations very closely echoes the statewide picture, which is that the most numerous type of organization is in the performing arts, and then secondly, visual arts, and then with history and preservation being the largest number of non-arts organizations. Forward. Didn't show the slide statewide, but most budgets are under a hundred thousand dollars a year. So what you would think of as a large budget in a business is much bigger than a large budget we think of in the nonprofit arts. I think it's healthy to have lots and lots of organizations with budgets of under a hundred thousand dollars a year, because in the nonprofit arts and culture sector, it's sort of the R and D part of the sector. That is, all of the organizations with much larger budgets, of which you have five, they all started out as a volunteer effort, and they started out small, and over time, they grew because more and more of the public were interested in participating. So I think you have a very healthy, small sector that should serve you well over time. Forward. These organizations serve nearly a hundred and nineteen thousand attendees annually. It's quite a healthy number for a single city. Forward. And four point seven million dollars in economic impact annually in Winona from these nonprofit arts and culture organizations. There is some interesting information for you in terms of your ranking compared to the seventeen cities that we studied overall. Remember, this is an opt-in study. We offered the opportunity to cities and counties statewide. Seventeen joined in. So it's not that you are ranked definitively amongst every city in the, in the state, but rather, you're ranked against the other participating municipalities and counties. So of the seventeen participating cities, you ranked eighth in population, so that's dead center. However, you were, well, you're ninth in economic impact per capita. It's pretty close to where you ranked otherwise. But interestingly, you are a little bit higher than expected in overall economic impact, ranking sixth. So you are ranking above where you would expect in terms of your overall economic impact. Forward. So here we see the top seven participating cities by population size, and then the top seven cities by economic impact. And there you are, sixth, just behind the two big cities, Minneapolis-St. Paul, Duluth and St. Cloud, which are regional centers, and then Grand Rapids, and then you. Next slide. And then in terms of economic impact per capita, we had a real surprise. Cook County, which is a very tiny population of only five thousand people, had the third highest economic impact per capita at nearly nine hundred dollars per citizen. Their arts economy is on fire. And so one of the things I'd like to do after this rollout of the studies is to go back and look at those places that are wildly out of ranking and look at what's going on locally to see if there are lessons we can learn for other parts of the state. Your, your arts organizations support a hundred and thirty-five FTEs in the city of Winona. So that's both, remember, those people that are working directly for the organizations, as those folks who raised their hands here, and then those folks working for caterers and printers and other types of businesses where the nonprofits are spending money, hardware stores, you name it. Go forward. About a third of our participating organizations are in the Cultural Data Project, which allows us to count some things we had not been able to count before. So this is definitely an undercount. We found just short of nine hundred volunteers providing nearly forty-four thousand volunteer hours annually in the city of Winona, which is huge, but that's an undercount. So I'm curious to see the next time we do this, where those numbers might be as we get more folks into the Cultural Data Project. Forward. So there's a misconception that folks that participate in the nonprofit arts and culture are only the rich people in the community, and this slide refutes that in that over a third, around a third of the attendees have annual household incomes of under sixty thousand dollars a year. That is, all workers in the family together, their income is under sixty thousand dollars a year. So this slide tells me that the nonprofit arts and culture sector is actually serving the whole spectrum of the community. Next. Attendees' spending in this region averaged just over twelve dollars per person, which I have to say, on the statewide level, is a little low. And I'm wondering if it's a reflection of some of the kinds of organizations that were surveyed. We did a large number of audience surveying, and I was surprised at how low this is locally. And I'm wondering if we did the surveying again, this number might appear, appear a little higher, but this is what we have to go on for now. The survey asked the attendee for their zip codes so we could tell if the attendee was local or non-local, and that told us that twenty percent of the audience is non-local. That's not just that they're not from Winona, that's they're not from southwest, southeast Minnesota at all. So they're coming from a distance, whether that's from a bordering state, or from the metro, or beyond. Go ahead. So what are these attendees spending money on? If you are an arts attendee, let's say you were from the cities and you were coming down to the Shakespeare Festival, what are you gonna be spending money on? Well, you might get a babysitter first, and then you hop in your car, and on your way here, you realize you need gas, so maybe you bought some gas on the way. And you get here, and you think, well, let's go out to dinner before the show. So you go out to, maybe you go to the Acoustic Cafe, you get some dinner, and then you attend the show. And then after the show, maybe you go to a local watering hole for a drink, and then after that, maybe you stop in at the hotel for the night because you came so far. And then the next morning, you have breakfast, and then you drive home. So the most common expense is a meal before and after the event. And then for folks coming such long distances, overnight lodging is a big expense. So you can see that each step of the way, this attendee has had an economic interaction with a business in town, unlike the person who stayed home in their barco-lounger. I like to think of the barco-lounger as our enemy. We need to get people up out of their barco-loungers and out in town, running around, spending money in local businesses, and the arts are really good at that. Next slide. And particularly, it's very good for the local economy to bring people in from out of town who are spending much more money than the locals at these arts events. Of course, the locals are also spending money. But if you can get people coming from out of town, staying in your hotels, that's a great, that's a great thing. So one of the things the city might want to think about is how do you market local events beyond your borders to bring more people into, into town to spend money here that they wouldn't have spent otherwise? Next slide. So your study and all the other seventeen studies of the cities and counties around the state, plus the regional studies and the statewide studies are available for free for download at creativemn.org. And we may or may not be doing another round of city studies. It depends, depends on after this round whether or not we see the demand for it. That just skims the surface of the depth of information available from these studies. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I have a question, I guess, two questions, really. I'm curious about the Minnesota Beethoven Festival. They're not on this list. Were they contacted?
The, in order to get into the study, they would have had to be a grantee of the State Arts Board or Regional Arts Council in 2013 and have their C-three status acquired by then. I'm not sure at what point of the spectrum the festival may have been in 2013, whether or not they were a grantee that year, or whether they had their C-three. Those are usually the reasons that an organization did not appear in these numbers. But if they were, then your numbers would be bigger.
They just seem to absent from the list. My, my other question was just, if you'd say a little bit about how you went about gathering this data?
Sure. The Cultural Data Project is a national project, started in Philadelphia. It's now an independent C-three. And they, what they do is they have this online portal. Nonprofit organizations go in there and enter all their detailed financial information, all of their expenses, including capital expenses, and then information about their audiences and their events. And then the grantmakers, such as the McKnight Foundation, Jerome, Bush, State Arts Board, Regional Arts Councils, they take the data out and use that for grant-making decisions. So a byproduct of this online system is a great well of deep data about the economic activities of nonprofit organizations. And as I said before, about a third of the participating organizations' data came into the study through that. An additional third came in because they were grantees of the State Arts Board or Regional Arts Council, or the Minnesota Historical Society, who provided financial data on all of their grantees. And then another way we could capture organizations that are not in these two systems, such as children's museums, science museums, public broadcasters, those kind of things. There was an online ten-point survey. Organizations could enter their expenses and audience numbers and thereby be included. So that was the organizational expense section. The audience spending section was done through surveying over about three and a half thousand attendees at arts events across the state. Each regional arts council was responsible for, I think, two hundred and fifty completed surveys. And then the results of those surveys were averaged to figure out the average audience expenditure and the local versus non-local question.
Thank you. Other questions? Chad, other comments?
So, Mayor and council, just for the folks that are here, if you would like to continue discussion, we're gonna go to the Minnesota rooms. The council can continue their meeting.
And I can make the motion to receive and file a report if you would like, so we can move on.
Second. Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Pam, I think. Any further discussion? And then, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries. Thank you. Not gonna be many left.
The arts are very smart.
We're down to one person here.
Can we just go?
All right.
Forget them.
Okay.
Moving on then to unfinished business. Item four point one is a request to revoke no parking on Franklin Street. I'd make a motion to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion?
Yes, I clarified this with, with Brian today. The painting, the city painters went ahead and did call this before the, before we, before we voted this in. And there's gonna be, there are gonna be some adjustments made.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
And we move to new business. Item five point one is to approve the transfer of the cable franchise for Charter Communications to include, well, they're merging with Time Warner Cable and Bright House Networks LLC. I'd move to adopt the attached resolution.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion?
Are we seeing any major changes within the thing, or?
Mayor and council, not at this point. It would be, the new transfer would, they would, they would be under the same cable franchise agreement until the end of the year. And we are working on the renewals with both companies.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
Item five point two is a resolution ordering assessment of costs for the 2015 miscellaneous utilities.
I'd move to approve the attached resolution.
I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
Item five point three is a report on the assessment role for the 2015 miscellaneous utilities and to set the public hearing for October nineteenth.
I'd move, I'll second.
Okay. Motion seconded.
I think I heard George make the motion, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
Item five point four is the certification of completion, final estimate and resolution of acceptance for the 2015 Franklin Street reconstruction. Move to approve the attached resolution.
I'd second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
Item five point five is a letter of agreement to comply with the FEMA requirement for levy certification.
I'd approve the attached resolution.
I'd second that.
Again, motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye. George?
Any explanation, anything, Keith, that we should know, or?
Mayor and council, this is a continuation of the certification process for the levy system. What we're doing exactly tonight is FEMA has issued us a letter on provisionally accredited levy, which means the levy, the maps will come out. Considering the levy as providing its protection, we're saying that to the best of our knowledge, the, the system will comply with all the requirements. We still will go through all the process in the next two years of making sure that's the truth. But the maps will come out and be, the property within the city will be protected by the levy on the maps for provisional for the next couple of years.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Carries.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
We'll start with George tonight.
Okay, thank you. The railroad crossing on Mankato Avenue is still being blocked and being blocked for fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes out of cracks. I know we're continuing to work on that. Also, I'd just like to let everyone know that we have a new radio station in town, one oh one point one, being very, very well-received. It's playing some of the, the rock and roll music, so.
George!
The Riv.
But very good station, so. And also, I would like to congratulate Larry Tullius on his retirement from the city of Winona. Larry, who has, who has had forty-two years of dedicated service to the park maintenance department. He went from park maintenance one worker up to supervisor, and Larry was a perfectionist. There was no doubt about it, and he performed his job very, very well. No matter where you would see Larry, you could ask him to check on something, see him on a Saturday or Sunday, and he would call you on Monday and say, we have it taken care of, or we'll be, you know, we'll be getting at it, or I have to talk to Keith, and we, we will get this project done. So I wanna thank him for his forty-two years of service and congratulate him on his retirement and hope he has many, many years with it. Also, birthday greetings to a very young ninety-year-old woman, Lorraine Greenwood, who celebrated her birthday yesterday, and very, very good shape. Looks like she's in good shape to go about another twenty-five, thirty, fifty years. So congratulations to her on her birthday. And just a couple of sad notes to the family of Representative Gene Palowski. Condolences to him and his family on the passing of his father. Gene, his father, was certainly a very, very strong, avid man, no doubt about that. And also condolences to the Frank Dreszkowski family on the passing of wife and mother and grandmother Anne. Anne, who not only is being missed by her family, but by many, many friends, many, many good friends throughout this community. And her heart and home was always open to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam?
I'll talk tonight.
Paul?
The only thing I would ask that the street department and engineer, take a look at anything that might be able to be done for people exiting out of QuickTrip, or Severson's, or Perkins, in that general area, whether it be... in that general area, whether it be re-timing of the turn signals, because it seems that if people are trying to come, get back onto the road, that one signal changes, and then the next signal changes, and so it becomes a steady stream, particularly in the timeframe from 7:30 in the morning until 9:00, and from 4:30 in the afternoon until 6:00. And so it may be just a timing issue with signs that provide some break in the traffic, but I wish they'd have an opportunity to take a look at it with the highway department.
Yeah, thank you. Michelle?
Yes, there's this wonderful thing happening this week. It's called the Cemetery Walk. You should all come on out. Al Thirley has written a script and going to portray kind of a, well, a dead council member, really.
Yeah, former mayor.
Oh, the former mayor.
A dead mayor.
A dead mayor.
1917. But there's a lot of good actors, though, and a lot of good scripts all over, not just clean.
All dead people, of course. But yeah, so it'll be good. Come out on the weekend. 12:15 is the first walking tour. Last one out of the gate would probably be between 3:00 and 3:15. And then, congratulations to Anthem. I was there for the grand opening. I think what they accomplished in the amount of time they had was nothing short of astounding. When I got there at 6:00, they were still sweeping up like mad, but somehow they managed to get it cleaned up and ready before most of the people got there, and it.
You were pushing a broom.
I was pushing a broom. I felt like I should pitch in, because they were trying so very hard. I, I did want to see George on the skateboard, but it did not happen. I'm still hopeful.
It didn't.
It didn't happen while I was there.
Soon as he was flying around.
And then a thank you to the people at the Polish Heritage Museum. I was down at the Apple Fest, and it was really well-attended, and those apple pies were better than ever, and the cinnamon ice cream. I could eat that all day. Anyway, that's all I have.
Well, everybody at this table is either a live mayor or a live council member, but we've been referred to as lifeless from time to time, so. Anyway, I want to echo your congratulations to Larry Tulius for his 42 years. Did a very fine job. And on one of those particular times you were referring to, George and myself happened to just accidentally run into each other early Sunday morning, quite a few months ago, at Menards, and here comes Larry. We were talking about an issue. Larry came walking up. We mentioned it to Larry, and he was in a hurry. We were all kind of in a hurry. We said, you know, we'll talk to you about it next, next week. And he said, no. He was really willing to jump into a vehicle and run out to look at it right then, and we said, no, 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 enjoy your day off. So after 42 years, definitely enjoy your retirement. That is it.
Thank you. Al?
Sympathy to the family, to the Susan Altough family and the passing of her brother Pete Wetstone the other day. But I'd also like to wish the best of luck and success on the football field this Friday at Paul Gill Field. The Winona High Windhawk undefeated football team is taking on an undefeated Mankato West football game at Paul Gill Field on Friday, so go Windhawks. That's it.
Thank you.
And under the consent agenda, there are four items. Approval of the minutes from September 21st and 28th, final adoption of an ordinance for one-hour parking on Franklin Street, an ordinance to increase the mayor and council salaries, and one claim against the city by Patricia Ruby.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second. Which way else? Seconded by Jerry. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both the same side. Carrie.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or adjourn.
Thank you. You won. 737.